Good evening and welcome to the Village Board of Trustees meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 8th. It's now 7:00 PM. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, please let us remain standing. This afternoon, I was made aware of the untimely passing of Thomas Corrigan, beloved husband of trustee Joe Corrigan. I would like to ask all in attendance to bow their heads and pray for Thomas. Also, please keep trustee Joe Corrigan in your thoughts and prayers. And on behalf of the village of suffering, please accept our heartfelt condolences to the Corrigan family. Thank you. Going to be a tough night to conduct business, but at this time I'd like to call for a roll call vote. Trustee Gerard.
Present.
Trustee Albert.
Present.
Trustee Barone.
Present.
And trustee Corrigan is not with us this evening. Next upcoming meeting, a workshop meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 29th at 7:00 PM. Please note, this meeting was rescheduled from Monday, September 28th. The next regular scheduled village board meeting will be held on October 5th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Everybody has those changes, is that correct?
Yeah.
Good. Okay. Okay. So next we have up a public hearing that we will be considering for a special permit for a private club at 85 Lafayette Avenue. Before we open the public meeting, because it's a bit early, Mr. Magrino, can you give us an update on the 475 Beacon Partners?
Yes, first, of course, my condolences to the Corrigan family, very, very sad. The, I received an email from Jay Greenwell, the planner, surveyor for 475 Beacon Partners LLC. They've had some issues with the county health department with respect to what their plans were. So they may not need that special permit. At this point, they're not going to be on, he indicated. And he asked that the public hearing be continued. So what I'm going to ask is that maybe the public hearing be opened and that it be continued to the October date and to give them some time if they're going to go forward, they can go forward at that time. If they're going to withdraw, ask him to formally withdraw. He's not asking to formally withdraw yet, but that may be what ends up happening.
Anyone have any questions before we move forward with opening the public hearing?
Does the does he plan on moving forward with anything on the property?
It's hard to say. That's what they're doing now, as I think just came up at the workshop. They're evaluating their options. The reason there before this board is for a special permit for private club. Whether or not that continues, where that's in their plans, at this point, I don't know. I don't know if they know. So I think that they're, you know, evaluating their options for the property. And if it involves a private club, they'll be here. If it does not, then they'll go through the process, site plan, et cetera. But I think at this point, they just don't know exactly, you know, what direction they're going to go.
They're exploring all their options.
Right. Thank you.
All right, we have a couple of minutes before the public hearing to open the public hearing, about four minutes.
Right, if you want to move on to something else, we can.
Well, we have the second public hearing right behind that. If we want to jump over into the attorney, into the establishing of the code of conduct for public comment during regular village board meeting, Mr. Magrino.
Right, we discussed that at the workshop. Nothing has changed in the proposed resolution that I had provided to the board. Last time, I left it blank in terms of the number of minutes per person. As I indicated, this is a policy, you know, it's a good practice for the board to have this, the board and the public. You know, knows what's, what's happening and what's expected. My suggestion was to do, I know there was some discussion back and forth. My suggestion was to do, adopt this policy. For now, it'll be, you know, a reorganization meeting in December. You can see how it works and tweak the policy as necessary at that time. So so it's ready for discussion and or consideration.
So I do have the resolution before me. Does any other board members have any comments? I'm going to present it at a four minute per person. But questions and comments, I know that we were going back and forth with it. Does the board have any other consideration?
As, as I've said previously, I'm against this resolution. I believe, and I'll use the exact words I used last time at the workshop, this is a solution to a problem that we don't have. I also feel that the public should, is entitled to responses when they ask a question and there should be, there's something in here that specifically says that no responses from the board until after all the public comments have been spoken by all the various constituents. And I think that that alienates the board from the residents. And I think we here as the village board owe it to our residents to answer them as they ask their questions. I don't think there should be any delay in responding to any questions unless it's something that we are unable to respond to, that's something different altogether.
Anyone else? Okay, so I have the resolution establishing rules of procedure regarding public participation at a regular village board meeting. Without reading through the entire resolution, are we all in agreement to the four minutes while we can have the discussion on the second? Do I have a motion to pass this resolution?
I'd make a motion.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
A second.
Trustee Gerard. Second, on the discussion. I know we went back and forth with the, the time from three to five minutes to no timeframe. I'm presenting it at a four minute per person for comments or questions. Are there any other considerations?
I just want clarity on how we will handle our responses. Are we, are we saying that we will respond to each one at the conclusion of the the public session?
I think if, if, if you're able to respond, you could. If not, you could respond after the fact via email, take, take the contact information and respond via email or, or phone.
Proposed policy and it is, and in practice, it would be folks come up, they give their comments or questions. At the end of the period, let's say there's five people who speak at the end of the public comment period. You know, either the mayor or trustee will go through and say, okay, you know, Mr. Jones, you asked whatever, answer the question if they can. Mayor or board members wish to comment, they can comment. So it would be, you know, at the conclusion. And if there's any need for follow-up, that could be followed.
If it's one other thing that I would add, and I don't know if it needs to be added to the resolution or just set forth when we print or publish the notice of hearing. And that is, and it's especially germane, so long as we're in this period of virtual meetings, is that citizens are encouraged, if they do have questions, to put them either in writing or send them by email in advance of the meeting. This way you already have the question and you may be able to render an answer at that evening's session.
Okay, that's a great idea.
The, the problem I see with that, I'm sorry about the noise in my back here, is that if, let's say we get, just hypothetically, there's a hot button issue and we get 50 or 100 emails, which has happened very recently. It, it becomes unfeasible to read all those questions into the record. And it's, that's why I think it's better to encourage people to participate directly. You know, it's one thing to get an email here or there and read that into the record, but when you have 50, it becomes cumbersome. And I know the mayor has read 50 to 60 emails at a meeting, but it's, it ends up taking several hours to do so.
Well, I think as a matter of practice, if you find that you have, for argument's sake, a dozen questions that basically are presenting the same issue. You can say, well, we've got this, this question from, if you want to name the citizens, and then answer it that way. Rather than read each one into the record.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 No.
No.
Okay, motion passes, three to one, with one abstention or, or nay, no, trustee Albert. Okay, thank you.
Oh, we can, do you want to jump back to the public hearings?
Yes. Okay, so it is now 7:13 PM. Like a motion to open the public hearing to consider a special permit for a private club at 85 Lafayette Avenue.
Motion.
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone motion, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Barone.
Aye.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that, or Mr. Magrino, would you like to address again?
Right, as I indicated, and I'll make clear for the public hearing, the applicant has requested that this hearing be continued to the next meeting because at this point in time, they don't have approval from the county to health department to conduct the business that they're seeking to conduct in the form that they're seeking to conduct it. So they may not need the special permit. But he, they have asked for it to be continued because they've already made applications. So typically, that's something that's accommodated since we've already, you know, published it and, and advertised it. So if anybody was interested, they'd be here presumably and hear the adjourn date. So they're asking for the next day, which I believe, I don't know.
Does that mean we'd allow residents to comment on this, or would be, would it be waiting until the the next?
It would seem to make sense to make it till, have them wait till October 5th, but if anybody wishes to speak now, they could.
Okay, so is there anyone from the public here that would like to speak to these special permit tonight? Mr. Magrino, Mr. Janito, do you see anyone with a raised hand?
We don't see anybody at the moment, mayor. For those who are listening, which would like to participate, if you are on one of the Zoom apps, either on a computer or a phone, you should see the little icon for the hand to raise your hand and be able to do that. The other way is if you're on a telephone, you would hit star nine if you are strictly calling in. So I guess we could give it a few more seconds in case anybody just got used to that, mayor, but at the moment, I don't see anybody with a raised hand.
Magrino, Mr. Magrino, what was the date that we were looking to continue the public hearing to?
It'd be October 5th.
Still no raised hands, mayor.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to motion to, a motion to adjourn the public hearing to continue the public hearing to a date certain of October 5th, 2020 at 7:10 PM.
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert on the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it is now 7:16 PM. Like a motion to open the public hearing to authorize the village to address property maintenance conditions at property maintenance conditions at 27 Hillside in the village of suffering.
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Gerard.
Trustee Gerard, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Magrino?
Yes, so, yeah, it looks like we're going to be 0 for 2 on public hearings tonight. This afternoon, I received a phone call from John Anzalmo, who is the owner of the property. That's the subject of this public hearing, 27 Hillside Drive. He left a message on the office machine indicating that he could not participate in the hearing due to medical issues. I then received the phone call, and again, this is not something that was requested right in private. Received a phone call from an advocate on his behalf from the Valley Hospital indicating or asking, you know, what was happening with the hearing. He indicated, given the circumstances, I would ask the board to continue this hearing as well. So that Mr. Anzalmo could participate if he chose to. I did, with respect to this particular matter, given the conditions, I was suggesting that we have a hearing on a night that there's not a regularly scheduled meeting. I was thinking September 21st, if everyone is available. I don't believe it's a holiday and I, my understanding is Mr. Anzalmo would be able to participate. Or anything unforeseen, he'd be able to participate on that night.
September 21st?
Right, that's my suggestion, but it's up to the board if you want to do that or leave it to the workshop the following week. Trying to save a week because if the board were to incline to approve this, that would be, you know, another week that
That would be in the evening or? That would be in the evening or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm suggesting the, the 21st to 7:00 PM if that works for everyone.
I'm available.
This has been a situation that has been gone on and on and on and on for months and months and months. Why would it make that much of a difference if we just did it on September 29th?
It might not, that's up to the board. My issue might be with the situation with, you know, COVID, who knows what the future holds. Whether or not people will be able to do it, and number two, weather conditions, but because we were going, the plan would have been to give him an opportunity to take some things, clean up, et cetera, before it started. I think that happened the last time. You wanted to go to the 29th? You know, that's the board's prerogative as to the date. I was suggesting the 21st to keep things moving, but I leave that.
I would not want to inconvenience everyone for something that has been a situation for months to make it one week less.
My general feeling, I'll do it whenever you want to do it, but I think if we do it on a date where there's already a regularly scheduled meeting of some sort, whether it's the workshop or whatever, there's more likelihood to, to have people know what's going on, you know, more people involved, more, more residents, that sort of thing. And I think that's important. I think keeping the public in the loop is very critical.
Okay, so it's either the 21st or the 29th, board, it's Steve, trustee Albert?
Given my druthers, I would prefer the 29th because that's a regularly scheduled workshop meeting.
Okay.
But I can do it the other date if you need.
Trustee Barone.
The 29th.
29th. Trustee Gerard.
Either one right now works for me, but.
Let's leave it, let's make it for the 29th, it seems date certain. So is there anyone from the public here this evening that would like to comment? Mr. Janito, if you can.
There, Diane just raised her hand. I'm going to ask her to unmute. And Diane, you should be unmuted if you choose.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I have a couple of, oh, thank you, go ahead.
I was just going to say you're clear to speak.
Thank you very much. As a neighbor of Mr. Anzalmo, I know it was mentioned before that this has been going on for a while. This has been going on for years. Since moving into the house, this will be the second time that the town is taking steps to clean up his property. This is not something that is ever going to clear up. I think we're clearly aware of the situation with Mr. Anzalmo, that this is a problem. I understand the board's feeling on delaying this decision. You know, and somebody said, yeah, it's been going on for months, but you don't live here and you don't see this every day. So I just want, you know, I just want you to be aware of what it's like to be in the neighborhood and to see what's going on. I'm also, the question that I'm also going to pose is, because we know that this is a situation that's never going to change, what steps are being taken by which government agencies to resolve this on a permanent basis? Whether that's the health department or a department in the state, anything else that can be done to permanently resolve this, so the town doesn't have to continue to deal with it. And it's not only for his safety, but it's for the safety of the neighbors at this point in time.
I, I agree. This has been going on for years. We have been going back and forth with the county, Rockland County Government, Rockland County Health Department. As you stated, the village of suffering did clean the property up in years past and it progressively gets worse. The Mr. Anzalmo is, I don't know if I could speak to those points about Mr. Anzalmo, Mr. Magrino, in regards to the protective services.
Yeah, no, well, my suggestion will be to, to kind of accept the comments and then we'll address everything when Mr. Anzalmo can be present, because it's you know, a hearing that there's not going to be no determination tonight. Again, this is an item that can be addressed when the matter is continued. I, I can say, yes, I've, since I've been here, I believe this is the third time the village is cleaning it up. You know, but again, the person owns the property, they have certain rights as well. But right now, the county health department has, you know, ordered up the inside, he's not permitted to occupy it. You know, for now, the village is proceeding under a specific statute in the code that permits the village to clean up the property and, and that's the step the village is taking. And we are speaking with the county and with others to see what can be done in the future. But again, you have to balance that with the, you know, rights of the property owner, and absolutely, I get it, there's the rights of the property owners who live nearby as well.
Bob, I don't know how bad the property is on the inside, but is there ever a situation where it could be so bad that the property becomes condemned and knocked down?
Again, that would be a situation for the county health department to get into. But it's possible.
I know Diane, that's not the answers you really want to hear, but the process that we are following is, is necessary and required. And we are trying and the property, the property owner does have certain rights attached to him and his home. And understanding the, the surrounding neighbors that live there and the conditions that you have to put up with. And that's, but that's what makes it so challenging for us to be able to take these steps and these actions appropriately and legally. So
Thank you very much. No, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for listening to this. I know you guys have been continuing to deal with this. So I thank, I thank you and I thank the board for, for continuing to keep an eye on what's going on here.
Yeah, well, you know what, after hearing you, I'm going to actually revert back and, and move it up to the 21st. If the board agrees to, you know, move that date up and, and we'll convene a special, a special meeting to continue this hearing for the 21st at 7:00. Does the board object to that? I mean, these are legitimate concerns that the neighbors have. And pushing it down the road, you know, the 29th, maybe something happens on the 29th and we push it down the road to, you know, to October 5th or something. So let's try to get it done as soon as possible. That's, that's the way I look at it. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment? Okay, so.
We don't see any raised hands, mayor.
Okay, I think I see one.
There's a raised hand, there's a raised.
Just came up, yes. So if I could ask you to unmute yourself and identify yourself, please? Hello, you're, you're unmuted if you wish to speak.
Phone number ending in 1-846, you're unmuted.
Okay, let's give them another chance to see if they call back in or raise their hand. Okay, if anyone does have any, if you're listening, if you have any comments or concerns in regards to the public hearing, please feel free to call village hall or submit your comments via email. And we can address them at the continuation of the hearing.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, there you go. Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, please state your name and address, please.
Gerard, Jim, Jim Janatino, To Memorial Drive. Just for the record, this has been going on for 14 years. I know a week here and a week there doesn't matter, but with this situation, it could matter. I think you should do it as soon as possible before you run into all kinds of different weather. And if the DPW is going to do it, they'll be doing leaves in October, November. So time is of the essence. That's all I have to say.
And we just made that recommendation to change it back to the 21st, so thank you. Okay, is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment? Okay, so at this time, I'd like the motion to continue the public hearing who would date certain of September 21st at 7:00 PM. Motion.
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 Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So that's the 21st of September, 7:00 PM. Okay, next is the resolution authorizing the village to undertake actions to remedy property maintenance conditions.
Oh, we don't, we're not voting on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, good catch. All right. Next resolution, Mr. Magrino, is the authorization of the village to enter into the sub-reception agreement with the Housing Trust Corporation.
Right, again, we addressed this at the workshop. Right, again, we addressed this at the workshop. This is part of the funds that the village will be receiving from the state's Community Development Black Grant Disaster Recovery Program. And it makes the village eligible to receive these funds. The village would be the recipient, but would pay, would have to enter into this particular agreement, which I had provided, which we would provide the funds to the sub recipient who would be the contractors that perform the work. So this authorizes the execution of any documents required in order to receive the funds and pay them out.
Have the resolution authorizing the Village of Suffering to enter into the required sub recipient agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any knows? Okay, all in favor. Passes, thank you. And the new discussion on the new Antrim Point Plan reviewed by the International Code.
Right, this new Antrim Point is the project that's going, I always say it's across from the hospital. It's really more across from the Salvation Army property on Route 59. They have received final site plan review approval. The map has been signed. They are now applying for their building permit. As part of that, and I'll ask Mr. Conley to comment on this. On projects of this size, we've done in the past, has sent it out for a more formal review of the code. Not the village code, the building code to ensure, you know, safe, the safety of the future occupants. And there's a cost associated with that, the building permit, and again, Mr. Conley, I believe is going to be $132,000. Of that, $15,000 would be paid to this review board to take a good look at the plans. This was done with the Orange Avenue Project with much success. It's a big help. And again, it's something that would benefit, you know, the village to make sure that, you know, it is being built to proper code and a project of this size. Steve Conley, are you on?
Steve, if you're on and you're using a telephone, please press star nine so we can identify who that is.
It was going to be on.
Yep, here we go. Hold on. Okay, Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself at this point.
I'm here, Mike.
You're unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay.
Hi, Steve. So we're looking for some feedback in regards to the International Code Council and the review of new Antrim Point and the plans.
Okay, what we are requesting is to be like, as Mr. Magrino stated, to send this out to the International Code Council for review. And of course, there's a cost involved, approximately $15,000, as Mr. Magrino stated. And it's just, you know, we just need the authorization to go ahead and do that, as we did with the Sheldon when they did that. Mainly because of the scope of the project involved. I mean, none of us are architects or engineers. And we just want to ensure that it's being built properly and safely. So that's really what we're requesting this for.
Yes, I agree. That's exactly the same process we followed with the Sheldon, basically for the International Code Council to review all of the plans, especially, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, the steel work and the concrete work and the, the, the higher grade building materials that, that we don't come in contact with as much. Is that correct, Mr. Conley?
Yes, it would involve reviewing all aspects of it, you know, like right from the ground up. You're correct. Make sure it's structurally sound, safe, distance of travel, life safety issues, all that will be addressed by them.
Okay, so from here, how do we proceed with that authorization, Mr. Magrino?
Michael, I believe you prepared a resolution, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I think you may have, do you have it, mayor?
It was done today, perhaps in the afternoon, in fact.
I'm looking for it now. Do you have a copy, Kathy?
I have a copy here. I don't know if that helps anyone.
Oh, you do?
It was sent by email this afternoon.
Essentially, mayor, what the resolution says is that whereas the village board, the Village of Suffering is in, going to be in receipt of $132,000 in building permits. And because that amount was not included in the budget and because the, whereas the work required is going to be outside consultants and professionals to review plans. Somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000, we're asking that the village board authorize an amendment to the budget to increase the building department, or I'm sorry, building permits by 20, by $20,000. And the offset that to a, an expenditure code for the building department contractual for the same amount, 20,000.
Okay, so that's what actually we discussed earlier, Mr. Conley.
Yes.
Right, okay. So I do have the resolution in front of me. I'm sorry about that. So I have the resolution amending the 2020, 2021 budget for building plan review services. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Gerard.
Trustee Gerard, on the second, do we have any further discussion?
I do have one question. So you were talking about having a budget increase equal to the offset of $20,000 for this cost. But it looks like the, the expected receipts should be closer to $132,000. So is that just basically going to the fund balance at that point?
Well, building permits will always go to the fund balance. So the bottom line, though, is that there's no authorization to spend the additional $20,000. So since we know that 132,000 was more than what we anticipated coming in this year in building permits, we could just amend the budget for that 20,000.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any knows? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Glickel.
Hello.
There you go.
You all may recall from the workshop that this little resolution is approving the settlement of a claim, actually a case before purb. The settlement had been arrived at in May of 2018. For whatever reason, this sort of fell through the cracks and what this resolution does is it approves the settlement payment of $1,100 and change to a since retired employee by the name of Scott Brown. I would point out for Mike that the resolution provides that that payment is subject to all regular payroll practices. So I don't know what the gentleman's withholding was at the time of his retirement, as well as any other, any SSA, so on and so forth. So this would look pretty much like a paycheck in the sum of 11, 20, and 24 cents, less the customary withholding. If you don't have an address for where this fellow's retired to, what Mike could do is forward his check to me and I will then send it to CCA Council and let them track down their member and deliver him his check. Any questions?
No, so I have the resolution here approving settlement of per case number U-34580. I have a motion to settle the.
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Albert, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Glickel.
You're welcome. I don't think there's anything else on the agenda that requires my participation this evening. If you want me to stay on, I will. Otherwise, I bid you a fond, good evening.
You too. Enjoy the night. Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Thanks.
Okay, Chief Koffler went out on a fire call. We're going to push him back. And we're going to move to Culture and Recreation. Ms. Kathy Mills, please.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, village board.
Good evening.
Hello.
And my condolences to Joe and her family at this time, too. I'm so sorry to hear about the terrible news. So a few things that we have coming up, we still will be having chair exercises at the gazebo on Mondays and Wednesdays at 10. We have chair yoga at the gazebo on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 10. We have Zoom yoga, Nancy Christopher's Zoom yoga on Fridays at 10:00 AM. And then the walking club at Yorkshire Park, that's going strong. People meet up at the park on Wednesdays at 10 and doing the walking loops. We have storytime at the gazebo. We have one tomorrow morning at 11:00 AM. And this is with Ms. Jennifer from the Suffering Library. We have this Friday night, September 11th, we have the 9/11 ceremony. It will be outside at Suffering Village Hall. The Lafayette Theater is very gracious to lend us their parking lot for the evening. So we'll be able to put people in the parking lot and be able to social distance. But that will be Friday night. We'll be with the fire department, the police department, the village board, and the public to always remember 9/11. So that's at 7:00 PM on Friday night. We have coming up next Wednesday, September 16th, our first senior, senior social. And that is in place of the Suffering Senior Picnic that we did not have this year. We're going to have a small, simple event at the, at the gazebo. And it's going to be a box lunch open to Suffering seniors. And that will be on September 16th at 12. It's open to Village of Suffering senior residents and members of the Suffering and the Roundhouse Suffering Senior Clubs. We have coming up the Suffering, the 7/10 Experiment Concert in the Park, that's coming up. We have the drive-in movie, which will be on Friday, September 25th, at the Suffering Ballfields. I don't know, I don't remember if we talked about it last time, but we had the most recent drive-in. It was a great night. We had families come down to the ballfields. DBW was tremendous with us, helping set up the sound, the movie. We had a great, great evening. So I thank DBW, Charles, Joe, everybody there for all your help with that. The PD, thank you as always for coming through, checking on residents, keeping us all safe down there while we watch the movie. So that was a great night. And the next one will be Friday, September 25th, movie to be determined. We have the Suffering Fire Department Car Show coming up on Wednesday, September 30th. That will be a great evening in the village. More details to come about that, but keep your calendars open. Jumping into October, the Halloween Window Painting that we do every year with the middle school. It's for students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. That will be on Saturday, October 3rd. This is an event that we can easily do social distancing because they literally paint on the piece of paper on the windows. So people will be, the kids will be socially distanced by the window. So we're looking forward to that event. We're happy that some normalcy or some consistency will be able to do with that. It's always been a big hit with the kids. The Suffering Chamber of Commerce is being very gracious again to offer prizes to the participants. So that is going to continue as it has. So we're looking forward to getting people into the village and doing the window painting. We're going to have a Halloween chalk contest. We'll get more details out on that. At the last meeting, we, I talked about arty time at the gazebo for kids. And I've gotten a lot of requests from parents of those kids and parents and just adults that would like to do arty time. So we're going to open that up to an evening at the gazebo. The date to be determined, we just have to figure out when we can get that. But that, that was a really nice event with kids. And we're looking forward to offering it to the adults. And the last event that I have is Sunday, October 25th. We're going to change things up a little bit this year. We're going to have the Halloween Trunk or Treat, which we've talked about through the years of doing for Halloween. This year, we're going to do that instead of the Halloween Parade because of the tremendous crowds that we get at the parade and at the costume contest. So we're going to change it with the Halloween Trunk or Treat. And more details will follow, but it will be on Sunday, October 25th. And we're looking forward to, to a little bit of a change for Halloween, but you know, sometimes things change for the better at times. And then the September 11th ceremony, like I mentioned, we will be having that on Friday. Thank you for everybody who got back to me about your role in the ceremony. It's going to be a really nice evening as it always is. The, on my agenda here, I see that I'm accepting the donation from Walgreens for $1,250. So mayor, I don't know what, what you need me to do for that.
Okay, we're going to just stop back and maybe you could talk a little about, a little bit about Patriots Pride and the local resident and the event that he wants to undertake before the hour 9/11 ceremony?
Sure, thank you. So Jeremy Luca, he's a Village of Suffering resident. He reached out to the mayor and he reached out to me. We were looking, he's looking to do a walk. And it will be on Friday night at 6:15 PM. I don't know if any one of you, if anyone has seen him, he's the gentleman that does his daily runs with the flag, with the American flag. He runs around the village. It's a really nice sight to see. He's a very dedicated individual. He's going to have a walk, not a run, on this, on Friday at 6:15. So if anyone is interested in walking around the village loop, it will be starting at Suffering Village Hall, going down. We're trying to figure out, mayor, this is something we were talking about. He and I the other day, depending on which way he's going to go, either down Washington or down Lafayette. Yeah, down Washington or down Lafayette, depending on how he's going to finish up. But if anyone would like to join him, he will be starting at Village Hall on Friday at 6:15, walking around the village and ending up back at Village Hall Parking Lot to join the 9/11 ceremony. So it's a nice cause. It's a nice community, you know, precursor to 9/11. So if anyone is interested, show up at Village Hall by 6:15 and you can do the walk before the 9/11 ceremony.
Oh, he's considering a walk of remembrance to honor the firefighters and police officers and countless American lives and those that have succumbed to the related illnesses. Very patriotic man. Thank you for, for being that patriotic and thank you for reaching out to us to, to hold this patria- remembrance walk. And I think it will be a great event and it will culminate right into the parking lot before our 9/11 ceremony. So it will be great. And keep in mind, you know, wearing a mask and social distancing while on the walk.
And just to add to the 9/11 ceremony, mayor, because we're going to be using the Lafayette Theater Parking Lot and Suffering Village Hall Parking Lot, anyone that is attending, if you could please go to the Sacred Heart Parking Lot, they're being very gracious and lending us their lot that night for parking. So parking, when you come down Washington or Lafayette, you can go right into the Sacred Heart Parking Lot.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you to Sacred Heart also for letting us use the lot. We're going to use, you know, the movie theater lot. We're going to have socially distanced chairs and, and spectators. We're going to have hand sanitizing stations. Everyone must wear a mask. And it's going to be a great tribute, once again, our 19th tribute to those heroes that we lost on 9/11 due to the terrorist attacks on our country. So thank you, Kathy, for orchestrating that. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you very much, mayor. Thank you, village board.
I'm sorry, that's.
I do have a question for Kathy. Regarding the painting, the one thing I'm concerned about, a lot of times in the past, multiple children were involved in painting each painting. So there might have been two or three children working on a single painting. I don't know if that's the best idea. And I wondered if that's something that's being avoided this year.
For the window painting, Steve?
Yes.
About doing in teams, we have talked about that. There's also talk of perhaps doing it in shifts so that they could still be teamwork.
Okay.
So one part could come in early, you know, it's, it's usually about an hour and a half to two hour event. So we're looking into a lot of different options, but those are things to consider, yes.
I did want, I did want to bring it up. And actually, I wanted to bring up. I did want, I did want to bring it up. And actually, I wanted to bring up something to Mr. Janito. I believe at the beginning of the meeting, you did start a record mode, but I don't see it lit currently. I just wanted to bring that up. So that might be an issue for playback of this later on YouTube.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. In the meantime, Joe Hunt was on the line and he said he wanted to have a moment to address the board, I believe, about this topic. Joe, if you're there, you should be unmuted. Oh, yeah, no, I we need to just finish with, what topic did he want to discuss? I'm sorry.
Well, he he texted me while you, while Kathy Mills was discussing the money from Walgreens, so.
Oh, okay.
Quite sure.
All right, because I do still have the resolution that's awaiting. So if we want to move forward, when Mr. Hunt comes on, he can speak. So I have a resolution here, accepting a donation from Walgreens for use by the Recreation Department for recreation events and programs. Resolved, the Village Board accepts the donation from Walgreens, including five gift cards in the amount of $100 each and the check in the amount of $750 for a total donation in the amount of $1,250 to be used by the Recreation Department to assist in funding recreation events and programs. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Gerard.
Gerard, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Trustee Alpert, do I have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Did Mr. Hunt get on, Mr. Janito?
I don't see that he's unmuted himself. We've asked him to unmute himself unless he's dialed.
Can you guys hear me?
There you go.
My computer was delayed. I wanted to talk about with Mr. Glickel and Scott Brown. I have nothing to do with recreation.
Oh, Mr. Glickel already signed off. Can we follow that discussion tomorrow?
Okay.
All right, all right. Thank you. Next, the fire, let's see, if Culture and Recreation.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Chief Coffey is back online. Are you online, Chief? Does anyone see Chief Coffe?
Let me check, Mayor. He's, yeah, he's there. Let me see. I'll ask him to unmute himself.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Okay, very good. Good evening. Sorry about that, guys. We had a quick run we had to take care of.
Great.
Just two items on the agenda. The first is new members from the Hook and Ladder, Emily Garin, over the age of 18. And from the host company, Judson Moyes and Mike Burns, both over the age of 18.
Okay, so do I have a motion accepting the new members, Emily Garin, over 18 and that's for the volunteer host company and Judson Moyes and Mike Burns over 18?
Both and Trustee Alpert.
Have a second.
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, all in favor?
Aye.
I just want to, I just want to say something that I know one of the individuals, and he's an outstanding resident of Village of Suffolk. He's also the commander of the American Legion Post 859, and his dedication to the community is outstanding. So I thank him for that. And I also thank the other two volunteers and and the volunteers in that they're going to be performing. So thank you. Thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome. And the second item is the resolution to purchase the brush truck for the amount of $2,000 from the Molston Fire District Hillcrest Fire Department. And Mayor, I believe you have the resolution?
Yes, I do. Authorizing the purchase of a brush brush fire response truck from the Hillcrest Fire Department. Does the board have the resolution in front of them? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
The only question that I have is, well, let's let's put the motion out there, the resolution out there. Do I have a motion to adopt the authorizing the purchase of a brush fire response truck from the Hillcrest Fire Department?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Gerard.
Second, Mr. Gerard, on the discussion, do we, did we identify the account that the funds would be coming from?
Yes, it's going to be coming from the account that was suggested by the Treasurer, Mr. Janito.
Okay. Mr. Janito, is that correct?
Yes, it's in the Fire Department miscellaneous equipment.
Okay, very good.
We just confirm the amount for the public.
Okay, so the amount where Suffolk, let me read the resolution. Hillcrest Fire Department provide the Suffolk Fire Chief with a quote of $2,000 for the purchase of the vehicle, whereas the Village of Suffolk Fire Department requires $1,000 to let in a vehicle with the Suffolk Fire Department logo and prepare the vehicle for use by the Suffolk Fire Department. Now therefore be resolved, the Village Board of Trustees authorizes the purchase of the 1961 Dodge M37 Power Wagon in the amount of $2,000 and be further resolved, the Village Board of Trustees authorizes Suffolk Fire Department to expend $1,000 for lettering and preparation of the vehicle. So it's a total amount of 3,000.
Okay, Chief, we've confirmed that there's no other upgrades needed, safety-wise, or anything else for this vehicle to be operational?
I went over there on Friday with Trustee Corrigan. We took a bunch of pictures, which I sent to everybody today. I hope you received them. He went for a ride with one of their members and everything was copasthetic. Everything was good.
Okay.
And Mayor, if I might ask, you might just add one line in that in that resolution to that the funds will be coming from the Fire Department miscellaneous equipment line.
Okay, it is. It is in there. They need to identify. Okay, that's fine. We got it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any news? Okay, motion passes.
All right, thank you, everybody. We appreciate your support and have a good week.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you for everything you do. Thank you for what you do.
Take care.
Okay, at this time, I'd like a motion to open up the public participation.
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Trustee Alpert.
Second, Trustee Alpert, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Please raise your hand and state your name and address. And we will be implementing the four-minute rule.
And Mayor, to be clear, is the is the clerk going to kind of log these questions for us?
Yeah, we could do that. Yes. And then Kathy, are you still on the line? Because we need someone to keep time since this is new.
Are you asking me, Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Mills.
Of course. So what would you like me to do?
Just to, just to keep the time on four minutes.
So when four minute, you want me to give you a warning or?
You could, you could, or Mike, would you, would you be able to do that?
Yes, Mayor, I could do it at 3 minutes and 30 seconds. I'll give a warning.
Okay.
And then the first speaker we have is Mayor Giannatino.
Okay.
Good evening again, Board. I'm happy at the resolution that you passed for the three-minute audience participation. What I'd like to know is, are we going to listen to residents or are we going to listen to anybody in Rockland County? And that's my question. I think the Board shouldn't have to sit there till 11 o'clock at night to answer people that don't even live in the village.
Okay.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Mayor, it looks like a gentleman by the name of Mike Lawler is here. Could you identify yourself, Mike? Ben has to be unmuted.
Hi, yes. Good evening. My name is Mike Lawler. I live in Pierce Parkway in Pearl River. I am running for New York State Assembly and just wanted to suffer. I was raised in born and grew up in, went to Suffolk High School. I graduated Suffolk High School in 2005. During my time at Suffolk, I had the good fortune of having Clark Osborne as my as my dare officer in in Montebello Elementary School. I currently live in the town of Orange Town where I serve as Deputy Town Supervisor. I decided to run for New York State Assembly earlier this year for a few reasons. Number one, affordability. We live in the second highest property tax county in America. And I think for too many seniors, families and young people starting out, Rockland County has become very unaffordable. And so I want to tackle that by tackling Medicaid, by tackling state school aid. Our education costs obviously are very high here and for good reason. We have great public schools. As I said, I'm a product of the Suffolk School District. Unfortunately, this year, Suffolk, South Orange Town and Pearl River Schools were all cut in state school aid, and that's something that I want to go fix along with the state educate, state aid formula, which shortchanges Rockland County and treats us like schools in Poughkeepsie and upstate New York as opposed to Long Island and New York City, where our labor costs actually obviously are very high. Public safety is critically important. We need to repeal the disastrous cashless bail bill and make sure that our law enforcement officers have the resources that they need to do their jobs and keep our communities safe. MTA, unfortunately, again, we are shortchanged. The MTA is proposing to eliminate rail service to Suffolk, Pearl River, Spring Valley, Nanuet. Those are the only four train stops in Rockland County. And the complete elimination of that is unacceptable, especially when we're sending 40 million more in revenue, in taxes paid to the MTA than services received. And I want to fight for term limits. You know, we need, we need turnover in Albany, we need turnover in leadership. And we need new voices to come forward, and that's what I'm offering. Suffolk is a tight-knit community. It would really be an honor for me, having grown up there, to represent Suffolk in the New York State Assembly. I very much would look forward to working with the Board and attending meetings like this. Hopefully, we get back to in-person meetings where I can present to the Board what is going on up in Albany, give you an update and and work with you. I think for far too long, our representatives have not shown up to a village and town board meetings for one reason or another. And I think that that level of engagement is necessary if we're going to inform the public about what's going on and work closely to address some of these meetings. Finally, I just want to say congratulations. I know you're going to be addressing it next. But congratulations to Sergeant Deirdre Smith and Sergeant Mike Tennessee on their retirements. They will be missed. They've served the Suffolk community very well over the last many years and during their career. And I just want to thank them for their service and thank Clark Osborne for his leadership of the department, especially during these trying times. Finally, for for those.
You have 30 seconds.
For those residents interested, you can find out more about my campaign by visiting my website, Lawler, the number four, NY.com. That's Lawler, L-A-W-L-E-R, the number four, NY.com. Thank you very much.
Hey, Mayor, the next speaker that we have is Claire Silverberg.
Okay.
Claire, you can be unmuted and identify yourself, please.
Um, are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi. My name's Clara Silverberg. I live at 11 Essex Lane in Suffolk. I want to start off with my condolences to Ms. Corrigan and her family. But I do want to speak about the, I believe it's like the first or second thing. I can't remember the exact number. But we were talking about public participation because it does seem to be a bit of a response to what happened at the last meeting, which it did go on very long. I understand that. But I know that a lot of people who spoke at the last meeting were cut off in a way that I personally found to be pretty disrespectful. In particular, there were three women who were cut off mid-sentence, not allowed to finish their thoughts repeatedly. And I just, like, obviously, we do not have the ability to do that to you yet or someone on the board. However, there is that ability, especially via Zoom, to cut someone off, mute their mic, and that happened. And I just wonder if in the future that can be dealt with and there can be something that is officially written in because I didn't think that was very appropriate. Also, so while I think it is a great idea to maybe have some responses via email if they can't be responded within the time that is given, because obviously you don't have all the time in the world on a Zoom meeting. Like, I personally, like, I sent emails to the mayor that were never responded to. I sent one I'm looking right now on July 20th in response to some things that were happening. And I just, I, there were specific questions posed. Nothing was answered. And again, it's been a couple of months now. So I just wonder if that would actually be effective because it doesn't seem like we are getting answers from that end. And yeah, I think that there just has to be, while an email gives you time to think through your responses, again, if you're not receiving an email to begin with, I just wonder what the point is. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Silverberg.
Okay, Mayor, next we have Claire, I'm sorry, Fred Sauberman. And Mr. Sauberman, we're going to unmute you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, very good. I think the Board is very wrong in denying us the chance to have a really good dialogue with you. When you limit it to four minutes, which has never been done before, you're simply denying a good dialogue to go on between residents and the Board. So I would ask the Board to think seriously about what you're doing and perhaps even reverse your vote because it certainly is a new bad policy, in my opinion.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Sauberman.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, next we have Jonathan Friedman.
Hello. Hi, Jonathan Friedman, 16 Dakota Court. I'd just like to comment that it seems, you know, just like the rededication of the blue line, these village meetings have been going on for how many decades and there's never been a time limit implemented? It seems incredibly pointed that the one meeting where the mayor receives a ton of criticism for hours is the one time we decide to implement no back and forth and time limits. I understand there is something to be said about running large meetings and keeping them on schedule. You know, everybody has things to do. But, you know, limiting the back and forth, there is no chance for clarification on things. If I ask you a question and you misinterpret it, that's my one shot at talking to the Board for maybe another month. You know, I can send you an email, but of the trustees I've sent emails, I've only gotten actual, like, non-copypaste responses from one of them. I got, I sent the mayor several emails about my concerns over the past couple of weeks, and I got copy-pasted mass response emails. And, you know, it just seems like a way to skirt around just accountability. And it's very frustrating, you know, if this is our, if we are being encouraged to interact with our government, starting at the local level, I mean, the easiest thing to do is to vote in your national elections, and it gets harder and harder, you know, to be involved, the more local you get. And this is an awesome platform to be able to come together and voice our concerns as a community. But your concern is now that too many people were voicing their concerns, and it just seems like the antithesis to local government. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman.
Mayor, next we have Bruce Simon. Bruce, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Michael. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Board. First, condolences to Joe. Tom Corrigan was a great man. We're all better for having known him. Secondly, regarding what a previous speaker said about limiting the, limiting comments to residents, I don't believe you can legally do that. And part of the reason I don't think you can do it is you wouldn't stop an absentee property owner or a business owner from addressing the Board. I don't think you can say just because somebody doesn't live in the village that they cannot address a pressing concern. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, we can give it a few more seconds, but at this time, it, oh, there goes a hand. It's Gertrude. Gertrude, could you identify yourself, please?
Sure. Hi, Mike. This is Gertrude Seifert Glad, 87 Parkside Jive. Good evening, Mayor and Board. I'd like to respond to the comments that were made specifically about me at the last August 6th meeting. Admittedly, this would have been more appropriately addressed at the time of that meeting. And I was a little bit disappointed that the Board gave And I was a little bit disappointed that the board gave so much time to non residents, yet chose to restrict residents. As I'm aware, I wasn't the only village resident who was denied time to respond. First, in his lengthy statement, Mr. Glickle stated that he would not be the subject of Facebook bullying. Implying that I had engaged in such. That couldn't be further from the truth. Never have I posted anything about this foil. About any village employees part in it, and most definitely not about Mr. Glickle. Interestingly enough, the only relevant Facebook post I've seen, though I had no part in it. Was written by a village resident following Mr. Glickle's A3 profanity written speech. I had absolutely no part in that post, but I can appreciate the astute resident who called out behavior that he recognized and labeled. As inappropriate, unacceptable and unprofessional. Two, Mr. Glickle claims that I accused him of malpractice. Again, absolutely untrue. I invite Mr. Glickle to produce where that accusation appears. Three, it was stated that I said I would sue the village if Mr. Glickle remained as our attorney. Again, not true. I simply stated that dealing with a residence question amicably rather than. Adversarially typically results in fewer legal disputes. Not only is that my personal opinion, but one that is well documented and widely accepted. Personally, I ask you to consider that I've had a long, positive, constructive, respectful, supportive relationship with this village. Prior to Mr. Glickle's involvement. Mayor Markunis, perhaps you can ask yourself what changed that? Four, at the June meeting, Mr. Glickle acknowledged that the village's actions were indeed subject to an Article 78 suit. But he went on to say that I won't win and then I'll be responsible for legal fees. Mr. Glickle is certainly entitled to his opinions, as am I. But stating that conclusion in a professional capacity is quite honestly way above his pay grade. And I'll stand by my statement that there are other arguably better ways to have approached this than to try to intimidate or go to resident. Five, Mr. Glickle stated that my foil was part of an agenda with respect to his words, not mine, a pissing contest. And I asked that he please refrain from speculating on my motivation, as again, he could not be more wrong. Six, Mr. Glickle repeatedly states that the requester, me, didn't like the foil answer. To the contrary, I got exactly the response I expected. But I think the more accurate statement is that the village didn't like the question, hence the profoundly negative reaction. Finally, this village is promoting a be kind policy. I'm wondering how not only tolerating but condoning a profanity laced attack. Act directed at a village resident by a contracted employee fits into that kindness policy. And you were critical, rightfully so, of the foul gesture demonstrated by some of the participants during that meeting. And yet you allow and condone foul language. Please ask yourself what kind of example that sets for the village in general and for the many students who had joined the August meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, next we have a John Poulos. John, could you unmute yourself and then identify yourself, please?
Hi, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. So I do want to address technically, I am a non resident of Village of Suffolk. I'm a resident of. Village of Montebello, but that's exactly what I wanted to address very quickly. So. Even the high school that the residents of the Village of Suffolk attend is technically within. The districting of the Village of Montebello. The way that Suffolk is oriented within the town of Ramapo. The neighboring villages of Montebello, Airmont, et cetera. The whole downtown area is in Suffolk. I feel I'm still very much a part of that community. I am a member or an alumni rather of Boy Scout Troop 21, which is housed in Suffolk. I did my Eagle Scout project with American Legion Post 859, in which Mayor Markunis is a member of. So while I understand that I am not a resident of the Village of Suffolk. And I would not be voting in that election. I vote for the Village of Montebello Board. I still feel that I'm very much a part of this community. Which I feel that while I will respect and war, and yield to. Residents' concerns and residents talking first. I believe I still have a voice in this community. And I wanted to thank. Mr. Simon for sharing his concerns about the time limit as well. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Mayor, it looks like we have Lance Weinstein on the phone. Lance, give me one second, I'll unmute you. Okay Lance, you should be able to be heard. Lance, you are unmuted, I see on our. Can you hear us?
I don't know if anybody else has trouble hearing, but I am.
Yeah. Okay, I guess we can give it a couple more seconds, but. Doesn't look like it. Okay, well, I guess we'll have to pass on him. And that's, we have one more hand here. Madeline Melendez, Mayor. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the Village Board. My name is Madeline Melendez. I live in 6 Riverside Drive. I'm a 23 year tax abiding resident of Suffolk. I want to also agree with the others regarding the time limit. We have freedom of speech. We pay high taxes here. I've emailed you, Mr. Mayor, in the past. I don't get any responses, although. Some of your board members have reached out to me and answered some of my concerns and questions. Regarding the high taxes that we do pay here. I'm currently unemployed. I've worked in corporate all my life. And it's a really tough time. It's a tough time and reaching out to my village and share some of my concerns. It only takes a few minutes to reply or even acknowledge an email. That's all I needed to hear, you know? It's about compassion. It's about kindness these days because we all are going through this together, they so say. But some have harder times than others, okay? And I think that this is the only vehicle we have right now to voice our opinions and to have the freedom of speech. So if you reduce that or take it away or do whatever you need to do to not hear us. Then how engaged is your community going to be with you? I'm willing to work with the community. I've been here 23 years. I and I was totally speechless at everything that was happening last month. And I did want it to open my mouth, but you know what? I was, I think, at the time afraid, but you know what? I'm not afraid anymore. Because I next month have to come up with my taxes and I will pay them, you know? But you know, it hurts when you reach out to your village and your community and you do not get any response. So guess what? This is the only vehicle we have right now and I'm glad we have it, but you should also reconsider. And keep us in mind and you know, really reflect in those that are having hard times. Thank you for listening. I give up my time. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, Mayor, we have a Rory Gonzalez.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wrote some words after listening to the, the last meeting last month. Which I found was very preposterous. So my name is Rory Gonzalez. I live at 596 Mohawk Court in Suffolk. And then I lived here since 1999. And as a person of color, I'd like to put it out there that I've never felt unsafe in this town, nor have I experienced any racism by the police here. In fact, I've only ever had positive interactions with police. I attended elementary school through high school in Suffolk. I've never once experienced racism at school. I'm not saying that these instances have never happened, but I certainly have not seen them. The notion that this country and more specifically Suffolk, New York is system, systemically racist is just not true. It is true that American history is stained with racism, but the story of America. Is the abolishment of slavery and Jim Crow laws to in turn include black people in the system. American society is decidedly, decidedly not racist. And when there is ever evidence of racism, we're equipped to extricate it. It is preposterous to suggest that America is systemically or institutionally racist. Considering, considering that we were led by a black president for eight years. Many of our cities have black mayors, black police chiefs, black police officers, et cetera. In a systemically racist country, none of those things would be possible. Where in Suffolk and what specific instances have people of color been a target of violence by police? I'm not claiming these instances like have never happened, but in such a calm and quiet town, you'd expect these instances to be widely known. It is ineffectual to claim that Suffolk public institutions are racist and people of color being neglected, neglected without evidence of such. It is not simply enough to state that the shadowy faceless entity you refer to as systemic racism. Is prevalent throughout our school district and within our police department without giving specific examples that we can work to fix together. If we can identify specific instances of racism. By individuals within any of Suffolk's public institutions, and of course, the responsible parties must be held accountable. That being said, even if irregular instances have occurred and are in fact racially motivated, that does not mean the system itself is racist. There are no laws that apply to people of color that do not also apply to white people. There's no secret society of white people who are making decisions behind the scenes to undermine the rights of people of color. There is no secret handshake or nod between white people to signify their hatred of people of color. I've heard in the previous meeting a call for a board consisting predominantly of people of color. I detest this. Is this a call for resegregation? Assigning membership to a board based on skin color as opposed to merit? Admittedly, I don't know how one would go about getting onto the village board. But if a person of color or people of color wanted to be on the board, went about it the proper way and were qualified, the color of their skin certainly would not bar them from succeeding. I've also heard in the previous meeting, several, several people asked Mayor Markunis, what do you plans to do to protect people of color in Suffolk without stating the ways in which they are danger, in danger, or what change they like to see themselves? The blue line does not put black people in danger. Again, it does nothing to ask what his plans for change are without stating the change you'd like to see effectuated. I'd like to end my statement by urging the mayor not to play the game of identity politics, but to continue to. Make sure that the people in our community are treated equally regardless of their skin color, religion, sexual orientation or gender. The town of Suffolk is not racist. The institutions in Suffolk are not racist. There are racist people in this country. I'm fortunate not to experience them thus far. And I'm lucky to have grown up in and reside in what is an extremely safe and tolerant place. I yield my time.
Thank you. Mr. Janito, is there anyone else that has their hands raised? I see Joe Hunt. Appears to have a raised thumb. I don't know if that means a raised hand. Joe, if you, if you could unmute yourself?
I'm unmuted.
Okay, did you want to speak?
Yes, I have three things to speak about. First one is 27 Hillside. The DPW members have done this multiple times and we have to deal with the property owner. Whether we're at a store, a diner, a restaurant, or just walking around the village. I would like to know how the village board and lawyers will protect us from the harassing and negative comments. That we have to deal with when we run across the property owner, for one. For two. The Scott Brown issue has take started in 2013. 2015, there was a decision and then it took almost two years, 2017 to finalize the writing. So this gentleman not only needs to have this resolved ASAP. But I think this board possibly think about maybe giving him some interest and at the same time. To attach this to his pay because he retired in the interim. So the pennies on his retirement might, he might benefit in time. Again, something that was drug out for a long time. Think about it. And three. The time allowance. And as you know, I just did three things and I'm a pretty fast speaker. I think you guys should do what you're doing with the four minute. And if people have to have a second round. Or send an email like you have said in the past, it's going to work and hopefully. Slow down this time that it's taken two and three hour meetings. To benefit the village and you guys to have rest so I can have. Accurate, responsible trustees and mayor the next day and lawyer too, Rob. You too, Michael. Have a good evening, gentlemen.
Okay. There anyone else? I don't, I don't see any other raised hands at the moment. If you want to give it another five or 10 seconds. Okay, motion to close the public participation.
I do want to make a response to, to one of the residents who spoke. That would be.
Oh, just as we do the motion and then send the response.
Okay, it's just that.
Motion to close the public comment. I see you're talking, but you're. Unmute yourself, Mr.
Motion, trustee Barone.
Okay, motion trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second, Gerard.
Second, Mr. Gerard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So you're saying now that we've closed that, now, now we can respond?
Right, that's the way that, that the policy indicates.
I thought, I thought it would be during, during that period. So I did have a question for Ms. Sizerflatt. And I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. I know you can't respond now. I would have preferred to, to have a back and forth to discuss this. You stated that you were unable to speak at the last meeting. I do recall that you did speak to my recollection, but. You may not have been entitled or allowed by the mayor to speak a second time. I think, I think there was a decision made at that point. To limit each respondent to one go round. Is that correct, Mayor? That you, that people could talk only once. You did deny.
Yeah, it looked like there were so many people that it was once, yes.
Well, so that's, so I believe that you did speak, but you couldn't speak a second time. So that's what that was all about. It was not because you were a resident. You were, you were asserting in your speech when you spoke just a few minutes ago. That because you were a resident, you couldn't speak again, but these people from out of town, out of the village could speak. And when in fact, that wasn't the case, everybody could speak and the mayor was limiting them to one time. And that was. A decision that was made by the mayor as the chair of this meeting. I just wanted to add that in. And I believe Ms. Silverberg had a question about responses. I know that I had sent at least one response to Ms. Silverberg and. We do try to respond as best as we can. Thank you.
Okay. So just to follow up to some, some of those comments also is that I did reach out to. Numerous individuals that did attend last month's meeting and I did ask them and actually invite them to a meeting. And I received only one response. And there was no other responses because it was interesting to, to hear that feedback from people and I. And I appreciate the passion that they had. There was a lot of passion and concern going. I appreciate the way you feel. I appreciate the way everybody feels, but. We, we need to meet and address the issues at hand. If there's something that we are able to do or I am able to do in my capacity. I would be willing to do it. Sit down and meet with you or discuss it with you, absolutely. I sent out a few emails. I didn't cover everyone, I'll admit that. But I received one response from one individual that said that they were back at school and they were unable to. To meet with me to discuss the issues that were presented. Feel free, I would love to speak with anyone from the village. It is, it's very trying time now on Zoom or even meeting face to face, depending on how comfortable you feel. We can meet. Outside or inside, but we do welcome the, the comments and concerns that you have brought to our attention. Okay. Next up is the Police Department and Chief Osborne. Chief, are you on?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. First of all, I'd just like to start. For my condolences to trustee Joe Corrigan, I'm half of all of its department. I lost today. I can say this as a person who has had both a. Professional and personal friendship with both her and her husband. King Joe was a longtime trustee for many years here in the past, and I just want to let. Board members know our department will help go in anywhere that is needed with any service or anything else that she needs. I would also just like to thank. My caller for the sentiment she mentioned, I was a terror. I was very blessed in my career to graduate over 3,000. Local Bear students in my tenures in schools. And I think it's for me real encouraging. And the students come back and get involved in their communities. Whether they run for office, whether they're volunteering for the fire department ambulance tour. Going into teaching, law enforcement, are very rewarding for me and I just thank Mike and everybody. Ultimately, go ahead. This past month, the Suffolk Police Department responded 508 calls for service in August. We also went our school collecting, schools, excuse me, our school supply collection. For some of our local families who needed help, we do that every year to help out. I would like to now, now have the board accept the retirement letters. I would rather not accept because first of all, I like both sergeants very much. They have both served our village exceptionally well for well over 20 years, both of them. And all of us here, including myself at the police department. Wish Sergeant George Smith, Sergeant Mike Fantasy, the best. And I'm asking, I asked the board if I could ask them to accept their letters of retirement, Sergeant Mike Fantasy and Sergeant George Smith.
So I have the resolution accepting the letter of retirement from Sergeant Michael Fantasy, resolve the village board of trustees, accepts the letter of retirement from, from Sergeant Michael Fantasy reflecting a retirement effective date of August 7, 2020, non pro tunt. Do I have a motion?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Gerard.
Second trustee Gerard.
Can you confirm the date? I thought it said the 27. I think you read the 7.
August 27.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, would you, would you like to read the letter on discussion?
Mayor, you know what? I did have the letter in front of me. The letters were turned in. I must apologize. I just don't have them. It was the 27th, Sergeant Fantasy, the 31st for Sergeant Smith.
Okay, I'll read it. I have it in front of me. So as per our conversation last month, I'll be retiring from the Suffolk Police Department on August 28th. My last official day at Suffolk PD will be August 27, 2020. I would like to thank the administration, the members of the Suffolk PD and the village board for their continued support, professionalism, friendship over the years. I cannot thank you enough for all of the support you have given me and my family throughout my career. It has been my privilege and honor to have worked for the Suffolk Police Department since 1999. I wish all of you and your families health and happiness and please stay safe, especially during these dire times. Thank you and stay safe Sergeant Michael Fantasy. Thank you, Mr. Fantasy now, Sergeant Fantasy. Congratulations on your retirement and thank you for your service to this great village of Suffolk. Continued success. Do I have all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's one. The next one. Accepting the letter of retirement from Sergeant Deidre Smith, resolve the village board of trustees, accepts the letter of retirement from Sergeant Deidre Smith, reflecting a retirement effective date of August 31, 2020, non pro tunt. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Gerard, do I have a second?
Welcome trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert and on the discussion. Chief, do you mind if I read the email that was sent to you?
Absolutely. Please do, man. Thank you.
Okay, Chief Osborne. This letter is to inform you of my pending retirement from the Village of Suffolk Police Department effective August 31, 2020. It has been a privilege to work for the Suffolk Police Department for the majority of my law enforcement career. Being a police officer is easily one of the things I'm, I am most proud of in my life. I will miss the camaraderie and I have shared with my coworkers over the years. I take this opportunity to thank you for your leadership and friendship. I wish you and all the members of the department a safe and rewarding career. Sincerely Sergeant Deidre M. Smith. She's been a, a, a longtime resident, a great sergeant, a great cop. We're really at a loss with the loss of these two officers, these two sergeants for their leadership to the department and I thank both of them for their service. And chief, thank you.
Thank you, man. If I could just real quick to speak on some of the things that went on in the last couple of meetings, just very, very simply. I've, you know, heard a lot of people talking and I think one of the things I just want to comment on, the board of the public is, I just heard Laura Gonzalez speaking and I just, I just want to reiterate the fact that here in Suffolk, I, we as a department and particularly myself, I think has always been like this, I think my personality, I try to keep it open to a policy. And there are obviously going to be issues. We, as a police department, are an enforcement agency. An enforcement agency, sometimes we have to take police action, but obviously people are not happy when a police officer has to take enforcement action. But I will tell you, one thing that I know we do here on a daily basis is speak with residents of all colors, creeds, races, religions, and treat them all the same. I get phone calls every day from residents concerned. I drive on a neighborhood, I stop by people's houses to have concerns. And I think the key is to keep my lines of communication open between our department and the community, which I think we have done very well at the village board. I think you guys do a good job as well. I'm on the same team with this. I just want to let everybody act it off. There's an issue, you know, feel free to call me. Sometimes the board meetings coming out. I had a board meeting asking a question. That's all fine. They can do it, but I think if they could contact me before and I could research and get my answer, they'd probably get a quicker, probably a quicker answer if they wanted it. If they just didn't want to, it'll probably be a meeting. So I guess the key is I just want to let people know, feel free to reach out. If I don't have an answer, I'm going to tell you. I don't have an answer, but I work with a great, great group of officers and I, I, I really can say these are the best officers around I've ever worked with in my whole career. So I want to stress that to you and to all of you on the board. Thank you for everything. I know it's not easy sitting up there. I know you take, this is up there too, and it's not easy being elected official. And I thank you guys for the support as well.
Great. Thank you, chief. Okay, moving on to.
We have to do all in favor on that resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor on the accepting of the retirement from Sergeant Deidre Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Steve. Next up is Mr. Zawicki, Department of Public Works.
One moment, Mayor. Let's find him. He, I believe he dialed in on a telephone.
Okay.
Yeah, here we go. Charles, you should be getting a message to ask to unmute yourself.
He was unmuted and now he's muted again. There he goes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Good evening. First, I'd like to offer my condolences to Joe and the entire Corrigan family. And I'd like to provide an update to the board. A DOT permit has been issued for the Wayne Avenue project. A pre-construction meeting is scheduled for tomorrow at 10:30 a.m. Construction should commence shortly. We're hoping that this is the last piece that needs to be addressed before we can actually get and start scheduling some work. The annual water main flushing program is currently underway and will continue through the week of September 21st. Orange and Rockland Utilities has plans for gas main replacement on Rockland Terrace, Prairie Avenue, South Street, Lincoln Street, Temple Lane, Lonigan Drive, and Washington Avenue. Construction will start this month. I'd like to update the, the signage that is on Maplewood Avenue will be reinstalled next week. Is there any questions regarding those items?
Great news, certainly about the sign. I've had a lot of residents talk to me about that. It's my neighborhood.
No, that's good.
Okay, all right. I have a resolution, actually amending resolution 124 of 2020 establishing a position of clerk in the DPW administration and appointing Daniel Curtin to the position of clerk effective July 7, 2020 to reflect that the appointment was authorized by the Rockland County Department of Personnel using the updated certification of eligibility for exam number 19137.
Okay, so I have the, the resolution, amending resolution 124 of 2020 to reflect the appointment of Daniel Curtin was made in accordance with the updated list of certification of eligibility for exam number 19137. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. The, the other item here is the, we had temporarily reassigned a laborer from the street and refuse department to assist the water and sewer department. Water and sewer, as I mentioned earlier, is currently flushing hydrants and flushing a lot, water lines. So they needed some extra help during that period of time and they are, they are down manpower as a result of someone being out on working this comp. So the temporary reassignment will be for 90 days. We wanted to, I wanted tonight to ask the board to hire a seasonal laborer to replace the, the labor that was on, on temporary transfer, reassignment to the water department. Unfortunately, I don't have any candidates at this point in time. So it's something that we're going to continue to go through our list of candidates. Hopefully we get some new candidates. And I think at a, at a future date, I'd like to be able to ask the board to hire a seasonal laborer for a 90-day period at the street and refuse department.
Okay.
All right.
Let's just start a little bit further tomorrow, Charles, and I'll see you at the pre-con meeting. Just remind me and we can talk about that seasonal laborer.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
As long as we have Charles here, I just wanted to update the board and the public that we have been discussing, Charles and I have been discussing opportunities to reduce costs at operating the wastewater treatment plant. And there are opportunities because we've got internal staff that has, you know, increased their capabilities through testing and so forth and you know, passing exams and also just with, you know, ongoing experience. But also with the, the progress that's been made to achieve improvements per the DEC consent order. Charles and I feel that we have opportunities to scale back what we require from JCO and then thus reduce the cost considerably. This is our largest third-party contract we have in the village budget and there's an opportunity for substantial cost reduction. There are still some minimum requirements that are required for a, from a chief operator and assistant operator, which we don't have on staff right now, but we do have personnel that are, you know, making progress in order to achieve at least the, the 3A, the assistant operator level. So I just wanted to update the rest of the board that, you know, we do have some opportunities here and you know, if, if there's no objection from you, Mr. Mayor, or even from the board, I, I think it would be prudent for Charles to be able to inform JCO that we are looking for, we're not looking to replace them, but we're looking for a proposal of reduced support for the wastewater treatment plant. And, you know, that, that I'm sure Charles and, you know, and the mayor and, you know, I'll continue to be a part of it to, to discuss with them what, what requirements we have and what they can offer and maybe come back with an alternate proposal.
Okay, Charles, we'll, we'll discuss that further tomorrow because I know we'll be meeting little items to talk about. That'll be fine. Great suggestion.
Great, okay. Very good. Thanks.
Okay, I think we're up to Mr. Janito, the treasurer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, my condolences as well to trustee Megan Corrigan and I know her husband was a great guy. I knew him and he, he'll be sorely missed. So in any event, greatest condolences to them. One of the things I wanted to bring up, it's not on here, although I had discussed it and didn't get a chance to get the reso out. It's actually a minor thing, but where the recreation did receive $1,250 that you previously authorized as being accepted, a donation from Walgreens. One of the things that the recreation department did do this year that was not in their budget was to purchase a projector, a stand for that and a screen. And that was all for their activities that they were going to have in rec programs due to the COVID-19 situation. In any event, the resolution that I would offer is to amend the budget to take $750 of that donation and increase the estimated revenues from gifts and donations by that amount. And likewise, increase the rec program budget by $750 to cover those expenditures. So I'll prepare the resolution with the approval of Rob Magrino, of course, for the board, but if, if you don't mind voting on it, it's basically, you know, resolved to increase estimated revenues by $750 for gifts and donations and increase the appropriations for rec programs by $750.
Hey, do I have a motion to that effect?
Motion, trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, do I have a second?
Second Gerard.
Trustee Gerard, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, the second one is a resolution. As you know, last month you adopted a resolution to transfer 37,550 from the Capital Projects Fund over to the general fund. And that was to purchase a new bucket for the ladder bucket truck. Whereas they determined at that time that the bucket had to be replaced. Subsequent to the adoption of that resolution, the fire chief advised us that upon further review, the bucket could be repaired safely. That the damage to the welds on the bucket were not structural repairs. And the repairs would be much less expensive, $7,350. So this second resolution is simply to amend resolution 144 from last month. And instead of transferring 37,550, transferring only 7,350.
I have the resolution amending, resolution 144 of August 3, 2020, authorizing transfer of unspent project funds from Capital Projects Fund to the general fund. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion? All in favor?
Motion passes. Thank you, Michael. All right, thank you. The third one is a resolution. Just earlier, you adopted a resolution and congratulations to the two sergeants that are retiring. They were very well liked and did a great job here while they were here, but one of the things that happens when sometimes people retire is they have accrued time according to their contracts or agreements. And that, that time is in the form of unused vacation time and sometimes unused sick time. The issue is that we, every year, we do a calculation for the auditors that says here is our accrued compensated absences, meaning that if we were to shut the doors today and everybody were to leave, this amount of money has to be paid off to people. Now, that total for the fiscal year ending May 31, 2020 is approximately $1.5 million. Now, we certainly don't expect everybody to retire at one time. But if these two sergeants had retired later on in the fiscal year, there wouldn't have been the money in the budget to pay them off. And, or to, and, and we either have to appropriate fund balance or something of that nature. It could create a budget crisis. What many places do, and I did forward to you the state controllers guidelines for a what's known as a reserve fund for employee benefits reserve fund that it's under article or section 6P of the general municipal law allows the village to reserve some funds for the payment of these accrued absences. And what will happen is during the course of the year, if somebody were to retire, you can dip into that fund rather than having a budget crisis. So my recommendation is not to put away the full 1.5 million, although that ultimately is something you could do. But to put away approximately one-third of that amount comes out to 520,000. That one-third would be enough to cover the first five or six people on that list if they were to retire. And if you take a look, look at the list of people that would be entitled to retire tomorrow, it's quite extensive. And if you take a li- look at the list of people that would be entitled to retire tomorrow, it's quite extensive. So uh, that's why I'm recommending that we establish this reserve fund. And uh, I would also ask that we make that effective August one. It could be uh, nunk pro tunk, if that's okay. Uh, and that would allow us then to utilize the first amounts out of that for these two new retirements.
Okay, so I have the resolution estam- establishing an employee benefit accrued liability reserve fund as described by the treasurer, and I would like a motion on that. And also to have it uh, dated back to August first, twenty twenty, uh, nunk pro tunk, so we create that fund.
Motion.
Motion.
Steve, uh, trustee Albert, have a second?
Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, any further discussion?
I do have questions. So what would fund this reserve fund? What would, where would the money come from to put into the fund so that it wouldn't then harm things later?
Yeah, that's coming out of the uh, unassigned fund balance that we have on deposit now.
So it would reduce the existing fund balance, is that correct?
That is correct. Well, I I'll correct myself. The total fund balance would not change, but how, what's in a different pot of the fund balance would change.
Well, it would change when you have a payout, though.
Yes, what would happen is that we would be able to appropriate the money from that reserve fund as opposed to the um, unassigned fund.
I I understand. It's 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 six of one, a half dozen of the other, it sounds like, but yes, I understand.
Yeah, very similarly. Well, here's the, here's the protection. When you move from this year to next year, if you happen to have a few years of uh, poor financial results and you ended up with deficits for three or four years, operating deficits, your fund balance would go down. But this money would still be restricted.
That makes sense.
And then available.
That's a very good explanation. Thank you, Mr. Janito. I really appreciate that. That actually solidifies it in my head. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then Mi- Michael, what are we recommending that we maintain a third going forward? So each year, there would be a, we would need to have some means of of funding this. Let's say hypothetically that, you know, our fund balance was severely, you know, our unassigned balance was severely reduced. I mean, uh, what are we proposing here to maintain?
Yeah, what what you see is that it's authorizing me to keep that level at least at one-third. Now, uh, I, you know, obviously, if if we were in dire straits and we act, we couldn't fund it to that level at a point, hopefully, well before that time, I would be coming before the board and saying, we're having a problem, we're going to have to reduce the amount in our uh, reserve fund. But again, it's it's the idea of of restricting some money so that you don't ever run into a situation where three or four people retire who happen to have very large balances, and it especially towards the end of the budget year where you don't have any time to react to it, and uh, causes a uh, difficulty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I I, did we have the all in favor, Mayor?
Yeah, we need the all in favor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any knows? Okay. Motion passes.
That's it, Mayor, from me.
Thank you, Mr. Janito. Um, stand by one second, please.
There, there is another item on the agenda for.
Yeah, I'm just looking at something. I'm sorry. The resolute, the E, you're talking about the E, right?
Yeah.
I think that was pulled for next uh, hold on. That was pulled for next month.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Janito, that resolution for the amending for the police for uh, forfeiture proceeds, that's, that's been pulled?
I I believe so, Mayor. That's um, there's some discussion that's needed on that, I believe. But uh, uh, we we can certainly deposit the check and record it in as a uh, you know, a forfeiture or a proceeds of a sale. And then if there's any further action to be taken, the mayor, uh, the bill, it's board can consider that for the next meeting.
And then the um, the budget amendment for uh, amending the budget for building plan review services.
Uh, that one, the uh, we should, we should have that. I thought we covered that when we were talking when Steve Conley was on.
And we have the reso?
Yeah, we, we covered that one.
Okay. All right.
So just so I understand, we're going to, we're going to accept the forfeiture proceeds, but we're gonna discuss the request to assign those? Is that what we're saying?
Yes, my understanding is that, first of all, the the forfeiture proceeds are there. So that's money that's coming into the village no matter what. The the discussion is whether or not you wish to dedicate funds at this time that you get in unexpectedly to a specific purpose.
Okay, and that's, that's the second part is what we're, we're gonna follow up as a later discussion for next month?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, I think that sounds good. I think we should discuss it. That's great. Thank you.
Okay, yep.
I I do just have a question on that, on the general topic of items, you know, the money is is from things that were uh, auctioned. I know in the past, we've taken votes on various other surplus items, be they computers or vehicles that weren't necessarily uh, the ones that were covered by this thing that we'll be discussing next month. But we've never really discussed in the past, accepting the funds for those sales. So I I, as a trustee and and uh, deputy mayor, have have not been uh, aware of what, how much money was collected at auctions, uh, you know, gov, uh, the the government bid auction sites that we use and so forth, and and how it's been appropriated. So I was hoping that in the future, we can actually be more open about that to the public.
Okay, we'll continue that with that conversation. Okay. All right. Okay, next, the trustees' update.
Mayor, I have three things I'd like to talk about.
Okay.
Uh, the first one is uh, in the winter, when you could not put lines on the street, a resident had asked to put yellow warning lines around Bagel Train, and Joe put up emergency no parking signs. I'd like to revisit lining the street around Bagel Train with yellow lines in the street so that it's obvious you can't park there, the signs, you know, get knocked down frequently, and this would be a more permanent um, sign.
All right, uh, Charles, Mr. Um, Mr. Zawicki, are you on? If you, if you please take note of that. Okay.
Uh, the second thing is the owner of the Suffolk Food Mart downtown. When I was on one of my early morning walks, he flagged me down, and he asked me if we could put a fifteen-minute parking sign in front of his store. Is there a procedure for that?
We, we have parking uh, in the CBD that we've got to get back to. I know we had, uh, that project was uh, pretty far along, but we gotta finish that up. So hopefully, that would cover that.
We have to revisit the parking, yes.
And then uh, Charles Zawicki talked to me about a workplace violence policy, that he was on a committee, and they all got together and they drafted a document, and the village has not adopted it yet. Maybe that's something that we could put on the agenda for the next workshop and see what the results of their policy is and uh, possibly adopt it.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and speaking of that, we we have an incident that uh, that falls under that. Um, I know Mr. Glickle's not on here, but um, do we have any update on that? My understand, I mean, I I think we were all updated on a related incident on the twenty-sixth of August, and um, I I haven't heard anything since.
Okay, we'll get an update from Mr. Glickle on that tomorrow.
Mayor, with respect to, can you hear me?
Yes.
With respect to um, workplace violence and uh, sexual harassment policies, those are something that should be uh, adopted by the board. I'll take a look. Uh, I'm not sure where we are with that. I don't recall anything being adopted uh, in the last year.
Be able to bring you up to speed.
That's fine.
There was a, there was a, there was a um, a committee that was in place. They put together this um, very lengthy workplace policy, violence uh, policy. And um, I know we got stuck on it.
Okay, so I'll I'll speak to him and also uh, speak to Mr. Glickle to to say a personnel related.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Um, I received an email from a resident, Paige uh, Paige Perry uh, regarding a recommendation, and I just wanted to read it. I think it's pretty useful to think about. Uh, it says, I was speaking, this is some speaking for her. I was speaking with Randy Ortiz in reference to a neighbor's smoke detector that has been beeping due to low battery. Not only is the sound annoying, but in an inoperable smoke detector is a safety hazard. We got to talking about who can, who can and who cannot check on and enforce noise and safety complaints. And um, so this resident is looking to request policy changes here in Suffolk to allow, for example, code and fire inspectors as well as police officers to check on noise complaints. Uh, in the above example, a fire inspector would be better suited to check on a complaint rather than a uh, police officer. The next would be a make it mandatory for all rental properties in Suffolk to undergo annual or biannual inspections for the safety of all Suffolk residents. Uh, and this resident says, I'm a homeowner and landlord in Suffolk, as well as Hillburn, Clarkstown, Hillburn and Clarkstown, and Suffolk is the only one where in-person inspections are not required. And then uh, she goes on to say that in Hillburn, there's a requirement of an annual in-person fire inspection at seventy-five dollars a year. And um, in June nineteen, in June twenty eighteen, Clarkstown implemented a biannual in-person inspection for any rental residents um, at two hundred and fifty dollars every two years. And uh, she attached paperwork for the uh, different areas like Clarkstown, and it was a complete questionnaire. It was quite exhaustive. And I I think there's twofold here. Number one, it's an opportunity to uh, keep Suffolk safer for the residents, especially those in rental properties. And number two, it might be an opportunity to raise a small amount of revenue uh, by nature of 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 the fees that would be associated with these inspections. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the board.
Thank you.
I like that policy.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up, Steve. I had that on my list to cover, so thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to thank the resident for uh, bringing that to to my attention. I don't know if she contacted other residents, but I think it's a fantastic recommendation for everyone's safety.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I just got a a couple of things, and uh, first of all, I just want to express um, my deep consolences to Joe Corrigan and the Corrigan family. On the passing of Tom, it's uh, it's tragic news. The uh, a couple of things, there's um, there's an outstanding item related to the C S E A contract. Joe Hunt had sent a couple of emails to you, Mr. Mayor, and he copied us as well. That, you know, he needs a few um, ancillary items related to work schedules for the rec department and the courts to um, finalize the C S E con- contract and get it printed and out to those those members of the union. So um, that kind of has been hanging out there since May, so I I think it would be, it would be great if we could close that one off.
Okay.
I had a um, a question. Uh, I know we talked at the workshop about oh, reopening Village Hall, and um, I know Mr. Glickle is not on, but I I'm I'm sure that you've had conversations with him, Mr. Mayor. Could you, could you give um, a bit of an update on where we are in terms of, I know we we talked about making appointments for, for residents to come in and so forth, and maybe checking temperatures and things, and wearing and requiring masks and things and things like that. But even beyond that, in terms of opening up the court, even, you know, getting these meetings potentially to be, you know, in person again. Um, I don't know if there's been any further discussion since the workshop on that.
Well, there has been, and we're, we're meeting on the reopening on Thursday um, to tentatively schedule the reopening to have uh, by appointment only. We have the process in place. Um, we're gonna review it. I sent it out to Mr. Magrino for a review. He made a couple of red line changes um, and and accurately enough, and we should be opening up uh, by appointment only shortly.
Okay, and then what about the court? Anything on?
Well, the court, I'm gonna roll into that, and then that's um, um, that's gonna be something next that that may complicate matters on the retirement of um, a certain individual that I'm gonna present. So that may complicate matters. We're gonna, we're in discussion with that, too.
Okay. Okay, and are we, we're uh, continuing with Zoom meetings until further notice, or are we?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all I had. The other board members covered the other topics I had, so thanks.
All right, thank you.
I just wanted to say before I forget, uh, as well, my sincere condolences to trustee Corrigan and her family. I was deeply saddened to learn the news, and I just want to express my, my thoughts and prayers. And if there's anything I can do, please reach out.
I believe, well, thank you. It's very kind of you. Um, I see Chi, uh, uh, Mr. Janito, I think Chief Kaffa, wants to just jump back on for a minute via Chief uh, Kaffa.
Well, the chief is a co-host, so he's open to speak if he wants.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me? Yeah, I'm listening. Um, just for uh, Mr. Albert, if you can uh, reach out to me tomorrow, I'm curious to know the details of with the smoke detector. In my opinion, the only person that should be investigating an activated smoke detector is the fire department.
That's what the resident requested, actually, exactly that.
So if you could reach out to me tomorrow, so I can get some more information on that, please?
Well, I'll, I'll, what I'll do is I'll forward you the email from the resident.
Terrific, thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Okay. Um, so I have here the uh, accepting the letter of retirement from Christine Anderson, the court clerk. Resolved the village board of trustees accepts the letter of retirement from Christine Anderson, Justice Court Clerk, reflecting a retirement effective date of September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Gerard.
Motion, uh, trustee Gerard, do I have a second?
Second, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, and on the discussion, um, Dear Mayor Marconis and members of the board, this letter is to inform you that I will be retiring from the appointed position of court clerk of the Village of Suffolk Justice Court effective September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty. Due to the COVID pandemic, my health is at risk when performing my public duties as the clerk of the court. The work environment within the department has also affected both my physical and mental health. I've enjoyed working for the Village of Suffolk for the past thirty years, and wish to thank all of you. Very truly yours, Christine Anderson. Christine has been a loyal and dedicated employee to the court and to the Village of Suffolk for thirty years. So I really thank her for her service. Um, you will be missed. And um, best of luck in, in your retirement. So thank you, Christine. You truly were a a great person in that court.
Yeah, best, best of luck to Christine as well. Um, I did want to ask you, um, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you know the answer that's off the top of your head, but um, as far as filling a justice court clerk position, is that require village residency, or is it county residency? Do you know?
I don't know offhand to answer that question directly. I don't know if Mr. Magrino, do you know that answer for the?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. That's a good question. I believe it's county, but um, I'll look into that tomorrow. And I I did want to, if I could, uh, take a moment with respect to Christine Anderson. Uh, you know, I uh, as Chief Osborne would tell you, I started as a young prosecutor, assigned to the Village of Suffolk uh, back in nineteen ninety-two. And I've, since that time, appeared in courts throughout the state, it was about every justice court, Rockland, many in Orange, Westchester. Um, the best way I can put it is there's none better than Christine Anderson. She was very professional, uh, courteous to the people who appeared before the court on whatever side they were on, uh, you know, prosecution, defense, was a true professional, and uh, she will be sorely missed uh, in the village court. I wanted to say that because I know from firsthand experience that she has been a a fantastic, an asset to the village, and she will be missed. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, make a motion to close the meeting.
Motion, trustee Albert.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second, Gerard.
Second, Gerard, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you all for attending. Um, have a safe week and we'll see you the next workshop. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.